We've got enough of us, that's all that matters.
Did he text you?
Yes, it's a call.
I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting for today. I'd like to go ahead and stand, please, and we'll have the invocation in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, please watch over us today as we consider these items on the agenda and, you know, the best things for our city. Let us use our intelligence and our creativity, our ability to plan, and our ability to look forward into the future as to what is the best thing for our city. And help us as we quietly and peacefully look forward to making these decisions. And in your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Loopy, do we have any remarks from the visitors?
No, sir, I think most people here are for the items on the agenda.
Okay, well then that brings us to item number four, which is conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony regarding a replat application submitted by the City of Navasota by M&amp;P Adventure LLC for the subdivision of property subdivision of property into two 35.83 acre lots. The property affected is located along State Highway six in Navasota, Grimes, Texas, 77868, legally described as M&amp;P Adventures subdivision, lot one, acre 71464. Loopy?
Sir? And we'll open the public hearing at 6:01.
Yep, thank you, sir.
Vice Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission, just a brief summary. The proposed replat is, as you mentioned, for large acreage along Highway six. It's 71 acres being divided into two equal 35.83 acre lots. The minor plot has been reviewed per applicable subdivision regulations. At this time, there are, there is no direct or immediate plans for development. It is simply splitting the large acreage into equal parts. The property is zoned agriculture, open space, and B2 along the frontage road. And because of those requirements, that is why the minor plot is presented tonight for P&amp;Z approval. Staff did complete all of the applicable public notice requirements, including 110 letters mailed out to all adjacent property owners within 500 feet. Faber McMullen is here tonight, if y'all have any questions. He's one of the, one of the property owners here. And, and yeah, staff recommends approval of the replat as presented. And again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the public that wants to speak to this item.
What's it sound for, right, ma'am?
Majority is agriculture, open space, and then the frontage along Highway six is B2.
So the letters were sent to East Milroy, the ones that run along that fence line, the houses along that back fence.
Yes.
My house is right across the street from it, and I didn't get one, so I figured.
Yeah, that, the program that calculates it, you probably were just at like 550 feet, you know, across the street. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Loopy. Have any more questions?
This is just a division, there's no change in from ag open to...
No, sir. Sure, yeah, please, Mr. McMullen, yeah. Yeah, if there's anyone here with a letter that has a big green parcel on your, on your letter, this is what it pertains to.
I'm one of the owners, and we purchased, Nancy Perry and I purchased this land probably, I'm guessing, 16, 17 years ago, and we're now both over 70, or we're at 70. And so nine years ago, in fact, when we crossed the 60 line, we decided we need to separate the stuff so our kids don't have to fool with it later. Nothing changes with the property, it's all still an ag, it's all zoned, however it is. It's just we need to get separated, you know, now and not have some thing like this going on after we're gone, so that was the idea. And so I got together with Loopy, and he said we needed to replat it, and so we did that, and, and, I mean, actually, the property was deeded to the separate entity, to her and then to me, in 2016, so it was nine years ago. So we're doing this really so we can both get our own, our number, or that way we can keep our ag, there's now a fence that divides the two pieces of the property. So it just makes sense that we do this now and not have to fool with it, you know, in some estate or something. So that, that's the purpose of it. Any, any questions? I don't know exactly, but, but that's the side that Ms. Perry owns. I own the part that would be behind, like, La Cita Restaurant. And so I just took, I took the west side, or the south side, because I own another 200 acres that's adjacent to that. Absolutely, yeah, I, I'm the property owner, or my family is, behind WC Tractor, that big piece of land, and there's a lake on it. And Roy was, Roy Waznowski has leased it for, ever since I've owned it, and runs his cows on it. So that's the story. Well, well, it's, it's a courtesy because it... It's a courtesy because if we were changing something, you need to know about it. But really, nothing's changing, except that it's now going to be owned by two different people instead of one entity. So that, that's the situation. Okay, anybody else, any? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McMullen, what are the plans for developing that place?
I have no plans to develop it, I'm holding it until somebody comes along that wants it more than I do.
What about, uh, Ms. Nancy, what are her plans?
I have no idea, I, I don't have business relations with her now. We, we just happened to own this together, we bought it together. She brought it to me and said, hey, let's buy this, this was, you know, I don't know, 16, 17, we brought it from a man named Mr. Bonham, and he had owned it a long, long time, so, I don't think she has, she's like me, we're waiting to see what happens in Navasota. And, you know, we bought it to hold, we didn't buy it for any other purpose.
So...
I'm not, I'm not smart enough to know how to put it there.
So, Loopy, if it stays AO, then no one can come in and develop and put another pecan lakes in there, correct?
Not without us.
Not without a petition and a process.
That's what I want to be sure. I just want that publicly stated, that, you know, they can't come in and, you know, come right behind Milroy and all those other places and come in and put, you know, Heritage Meadows, or pecan lakes, or anything like that.
They would have to go through a process, and, and this is, and this tonight is not that.
It's not that, but I, I just want to be clear on that, so that everybody does know that and understand.
Yeah, this just divides ownership, that's all. It doesn't change anything of the nature of the property or the allowed uses of the property.
Because, you know, what, it was a couple of years ago, wasn't it, that we were approached about making it into something...
Not, not by me, it weren't, or not my part.
When we were going through the workshop about different areas that were going to be expansion and stuff, we, as a committee, were cleaning up properties and trying to assign, you know, was this going to be open ag, is this going to be B1, B2, or whatever? And we approached y'all about it, and then y'all, y'all asked us to, to leave y'all out of it. And that's been a couple of years ago, just, just what I can remember, but you asked...
I don't remember, I've been ill and had, been in and out of different treatments, and so...
Well, y'all, y'all asked not, not to be, not to participate, and we honored that, and so that's where we are.
Yeah, that's why it's still ag open.
I remember Ms. Perry did approach us about doing some, like, recreational type things back there, that was a couple of years ago, too. And she never, I mean, it was never really formally discussed.
Yeah, it was just, it was in discussion of what could happen, or what she would be open to in the future, but there was nothing formal. But it was when we were doing the ag open workshops, where we're looking at all the properties in the city that were zoned ag open, and we were saying, what should they be? We reached out to the property owners, Mr. McMullen and Ms. Perry, and, and they just said, no, we'd, we'd rather stay ag open and leave our options open for down the road.
Yeah, my, my intent is that, you know, it's premature now to really figure out, I mean, I've, I've been approached by a few people wanting to do this or that, and I just said, look, I'm not interested, I mean, they've come and wanted to buy a piece in the back, or, the only thing that I've sold out of all the pieces that I have was to the City of Navasota. I sold four acres of my acreage to City of Navasota to build a new fire department. So that's, that's the only thing that's changed in my ownership of all of my piece since I've had it.
Yeah, I just was concerned about what may happen.
No, ma'am, I'm not, the Western Club is. Yeah, they own that. Or someone that's related to them, you know, to the Fuquay thing. Yeah, but no, I have no plans to really do anything with it, just to hold it and...
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's part, part of, hopefully, a good future for my family, that's it, and for the city.
Thank you, Faber.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions regarding this item? We'll close the public hearing, 613. And we're still on item four, now it's action.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, that we approve the replat application submitted to the City of Navasota by M&amp;P Adventures LLC for the subdivision of property into two 35.83 acre lots. The property affected is located along State Highway six in Navasota, Grimes County, Texas, 77868, legally described as M&amp;P Adventure Subdivision, lot one, acre 71464.
We have a motion by Commissioner Carroll.
I second.
And second by Debbie, all in favor by responding by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Nope, motion carries. Leads us to item number...
Mr. Chairman, can I take a moment? For those of you who came because you got notices for this, I just want to say that we appreciate you paying attention to the mail that you get, and that, and what's going on in your neighborhood and around you, and, and the next one that you get, please come again, because it's really important that we know what you're thinking about, and that you know what's going on in your backyard. So I really appreciate you being here, thank you.
All right, so that leads us to item number five, which is conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony regarding a zoning change application submitted by the City of Navasota by Don Parkinson for the property located at 9314 Interstate Drive, Navasota, Texas, 77868. The zoning change application requested to change the zoning from AO Agricultural Open Spaces District to M1 Light Industrial District to allow for the operation of a vehicle sales unit. The property affected is, is legally described as A0046J Moore, tract 63-1, acres 1.279, and open the comment at 615.
Vice Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission, again, a quick, a quick recap and summary. The zoning change request, as you read, is from agriculture, open space, to M1 Light Industrial District. The project representative, Nicholas Harmon, with Trailers of Texas, is he representing the application? The zoning change request is to allow for the operation of a vehicular sales use in that potential M1 Light Industrial District. A little bit of background on this property, it was formally outside of the city limits within Navasota's industrial district. It was recently annexed by the city in January of this year, and so when a property is annexed into the city, it receives an automatic zoning designation of ag open space. And so Mr., Mr. Harmon approached the property owner wanting to conduct business here, and that is when the process began to get this thing changed to the appropriate zoning. It being within Navasota's industrial park, the light industrial district designation makes sense. And again, Mr. Harmon is here tonight, if y'all have any questions about the business itself or the change request.
Yes, questions? Where's Mr. Harmon?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Harmon, if you just state your name and address, and then we can get going.
Sure, my name is Nicholas Harmon, I live in Brenham, Texas. The address is 140 New Edum Road.
Thank you.
Can you tell us more about this vehicular sales?
So my business is called Trailers of Texas, we sell new and used tank trailers, so just like a car dealership that you would see along, you know, the road.
Tank trailers?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you define that a little bit for me?
So, what you see when you see, like Walmart, or the gas stations bringing fuel, the large 18-wheeler style trailers, that's what we sell, both new and used. Some of our customers include buckies, we sell all the trailers for them and have for many years. My company was started in 1995, I joined it 13 years ago, it's a family-owned business. I've just recently purchased my business partner out, so I now own 100% of the business, and that's the main reason for the relocation, because I was driving from Brenham to Cleveland, Texas, four days a week, almost 200 miles a day, so, wanted to find something a little closer to home and relocate, so that's why the petition for the change to bring the business here.
And I'd imagine most of your business plan is online, to where you really don't need to have...
That's correct, the, the business model's changed, you know, we, not everyone buys a tank trailer, right, you know, where everyone could buy a car, so you need to be a little more publicly seen, but a lot of our, you know, foot traffic has decreased with the popular, the increase in online presence, so that's the main reason. So ideally, it's more of a storage facility, but as a dealer, you have to have certain requirements, and that's what we're trying to meet.
Do you have other facilities like this?
That would be the only location. So the previous location that we had in Cleveland, Texas, we closed on it before Memorial Day.
How many of these tank trailers do you anticipate locating there?
Typically, I would say in the last two to three years, we haven't had more than 20 on the yard at any point. I think that location for probably 30 to 35 units easily, you know? I don't typically carry that much inventory, I would say typically I would have 10 to 15 units at a time, max.
And then as far as a site plan, do we need a site plan, and does it need to have, you know, the same things that other site plans do, and landscaping, and all of that stuff?
No, so, so that is... Because it's business.
That, that is one unique thing about the industrial districts, so the city has two, heavy industrial and light industrial. Obviously, those zoning districts are geared towards heavy industry.
Yes.
And so in this situation, if the zoning change were to be approved, Mr. Harmon would just be working directly with our building official to get the building, make sure the building meets all applicable codes inside, but there's really no exterior site requirements, because it is that industrial district zoning.
So we'll have a building as well as a lot?
Yes, well, the building is already there, there's an existing building, there's an existing gravel parking area, it's right next to, I believe this is Texas Pipe on the side. So no, there's an existing building, existing facilities, the only difference is now it's zoned in the city limits, and we have to make sure it's zoned properly for that, for that business.
Do you intend to just utilize it as is, the existing building and the existing gravel, or, or to change the lot?
I'm not going to change the lot, the adequate rock that's on there is suitable for what I do. My trailers don't typically have any product in them, we always get them washed out, so there's no hazardous materials or anything like that.
So they're, they're cleaned elsewhere before they're brought to you?
Right, yeah, it makes it easier to sell and transport, you don't have to have a hazmat driver, worry about what's inside, you know, because the products can change, it could be. So usually, 99% of the time, they're washed prior to bringing them here, or even me purchasing them.
You mentioned some state regulations that you fall under, what kind of, what kind of things is that?
So as a dealer, there's certain requirements that you have to be, you have to be open a minimum of four hours a day, four consecutive hours a day. My plan is to be eight to four o'clock, four days a week, Monday through Thursday. You have to have an office, you have to have a chair, wifi, you know, like little things that haven't been updated in many years, but, you know, you still got to meet the requirements because you don't want, you know, day-night, you know, issues, so...
The, the existing drive and everything is adequate for you?
It's, it could be improved, you know, as far as getting a trailer in and out, but it's doable, you know, but it, it could, if you see where the driveway is now, you kind of have to make like an S to get to the back in that sense, you know? In a perfect world, yes, I'd probably like a straight shot to the back, but it's suitable and doable, you know, but it's not a major item at this point.
Any other questions or concerns? Thank you for your time.
It would, yes, so right now we have three employees, myself, an office manager, and then we have one sales guy. I would like to expand and, you know, grow the business. We've typically had five employees most times throughout those, you know, 30 years that we've been in business. But I would like to, you know, definitely bring business here, and then we also pay inventory tax, so the county gets, you know, the revenue from that, from the inventory that we have each year. And of course, you know, when we sell a trailer, we collect sales tax, and that will go to the county and the state.
That's a great question, thank you.
It is.
Thank you.
Great question.
Okay. All right, thank you, we'll close the public comment at 623.
I make a motion, we approve the zoning change application submitted to the City of Navasota by Don Parkinson for the property located at 9314 Interstate Drive, Navasota, Texas, 77868, to change the zoning from AO to M1 to allow for operation of a vehicular sales site.
I have a motion by Commissioner Deah.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Todd, all in favor by reply by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, none, motion carries. That brings us to item number six. To conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony regarding the developmental plan of applications submitted by the City of Navasota by Rand Paulus for the property located at 612 East Washington Avenue, Navasota, Grimes County, Texas, 77868. The development plan application requests to allow for the operation of a massage day spa business, a personal service shop use, personal service shop use is listed as a permitted use under the properties currently B1 business zoning districts, however, the developmental plan approval is requested for all mixed-use businesses along the overlay district. The property affected is legally described as HNTC Block 88, lots three, four, and five. We'll open the public comment at 624. Loopy?
Planning and Zoning Commission, a brief recap, the, the proposed development plan is a requirement as part of the overlay district requirements. A massage slash day spa falls under the category of personal service shop use, which is an allowed use under B1 zoning district, however, because of that overlay designation, this development plan is required. Similar to the last item that you just approved, you're voting on a recommendation to approve or deny, and then that goes to city council for final consideration. The development plan was reviewed per applicable zoning and development regulations. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the site, it's a, it's a beautiful historic home, and they've, they've done a great job getting it back to its glory. There's a lot of things in the overlay district that apply, obviously, it was built purposely for this kind of businesses, and so, anyway, just wanted to make sure y'all were aware, and if y'all hadn't had a chance to drive by, the building's looking great. As part of the development plan, there is an example of the sign, which you can also see if you drive by, it's sitting out there right now. They're going to make some minor changes to the sign, making it a little bit shorter on the legs, but everything else meets overlay district requirements, and it also, I think it complements the home really well. Randall Paulus, and Tina, and Guyan are here, if y'all have any questions about the development plan.
The sign was the right dimension, it was just too tall, is that what it was?
Yeah, the legs are a little, little too long, are, for a freestanding sign like that, you have to have 11 inches, and I think that's about...
Underneath it, yeah.
But everything else meets the requirements.
If you don't mind, come stand up and state your name and address, and then we'll go from there.
Hello, everyone, I'm Randall Paulus, and we do own the house at 612 East Washington, and thanks for hearing us, and yes, we will chop a little bit off those legs and bring them down. We just, a little exuberant with the sign.
You can just dig deeper holes.
We thought we'd have something, yeah, we thought we'd have maybe a little signlet underneath or something, but we'll skip that, so...
Well, y'all have really done a fabulous job on the house.
I hope the stairwell is still so beautiful.
You need to come see it, it's, we polished it up.
Go get him a son.
It's been a five-year slog trying to get this thing up and ready, and...
I do have a question, though. I am a nurse, so using the word dopamine is a little, you know, so tell me about the name.
So we've been receiving opinions about the name of the place. Some relatives are like, are you, sure you're comfortable with the connotations that dopamine brings, but it's also the newer receptor in the brain that registers, yeah, feelings of reward and calmness, and the pleasure, in this case, of receiving licensed therapeutic massage, and so we were, that's what we were going for, you know?
Yeah, it was just a little shocking to me, I think, I get, you know, just because I'm a nurse, I've given dopamine.
Well, plus, we thought, well, if we shock a few people, I mean, some people go for the, I mean, there's this perfume named Poison, right, so...
You know, it's a two-story house, I guess y'all have questioned up into parlors in the bottom, and then also parlors at top, in the second floor, or how's that work?
It's subdivided as Victorians were and are, we haven't made any changes to the house, really, just saving it from the wrecking ball. And yes, upstairs, there is an upstairs foyer, you referred to the steps, so you've got your main foyer, up you go, and then it's kind of an identical thing to greet you upstairs. Upstairs primarily... Uh, upstairs primarily, at this juncture, is gonna be, uh, residential, so. Uh, business confined to two rooms downstairs, foyer, it may extend back into another room, so.
And what about parking there? How's that gonna work?
Well, you've got your driveway and plenty of spots on either side, we, it'd be nice to have a big grass lawn, but we'll set aside all that so people can pull in. Any overflow, which we don't anticipate being mobbed or anything, uh, there's plenty of street parking all the way around, and we've got things like that, so. We're surrounded by concrete otherwise.
And then the business hours cooperation?
Uh, yeah, let's see, what do we say, um, I think it's, what were the hours?
Ten AM to seventeen.
Seven every night, uh, starting at ten to seven, all right, and what, Tuesday off, so. She's the operator of the, I just own the house. It's my wife, she will be rendering services as you see her now, so.
Hello, counselor, my name is Tina Nguyen, and I'm a massage and lipid license, also a physician. We also do the massage, and we also do skincare treatment. So, we also do waxing, too, so that's for the plate to come and have a lot of treatment.
So, are y'all regulated and all that stuff by the state and counties?
Yes, ma'am, we already have all the license.
And the business itself is?
We already all set up, now the only thing we need to do is just have a counselor, uh, counselor to approve for us.
And have you done this in other locations, or?
Yes, ma'am, I, um, locate in, uh, River Oak in Houston. So, when I find this house, I want to bring all my knowledges to Navasota.
Houston upscale to Navasota.
Upscale spa in Navasota.
Cool.
Thank you.
That's, that plate for the, all the lady come and relax.
I need it today, somebody ran into my car a little while ago.
Yeah, I told me the, I told me the Lopez that if he send his wife to my place, where's he go back home, she will be a happy lady. Happy wife, happy house.
Okay.
Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, counselor.
There are no further questions, we'll close the public, uh, comment at six thirty-two.
I make a motion, we-
I have one question to Lupe, there's no, there's no issue about upstairs residential in a B1?
Uh, no, because it, it allows for both uses, and in this instance, the property owners and the homeowners will be living there. So, it, it creates a, it, it's, it's-
I, I was just looking at, that it wasn't separate structures, you know what I mean?
No, no.
That it's a single structure, okay?
Yes, sir.
There are some others around town like that, too, where people live in their business.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah, so no, it's, it's fine per zone.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the, um, application submitted to the city of Navasota by Randall Paulus for the property located at six, one, two East Washington Avenue. Development plan application requests to allow for the operation of a massage day spa business, personal service shop use, uh, and it is permitted use under the property's current B1, um, zone. And I think it's gonna be nice. I make the recommendation we approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dea.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Carolyn, all in favor, reply by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Opposed, none, the motion carries. All right.
One, one more step, city council on the fourteenth.
You won't have a problem.
All right, that leads us to item number seven, which is consideration of possible action of the minutes uh, from the July twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting, as presented, uh, I mean, Todd, you had a-
Yes, I would like the minutes revised to include specific language that I said at the end of the meeting. And I will take it from the audio of the, um, video, the audio of the video, um, from the meeting. I made the comment when we voted that I vote to approve based on the fact that I can't deny on the standings. And I would like that in the written record as well as the video record, please.
On the driveway.
We'll get that fixed.
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, as Todd asked for the additional.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, yeah. I'll second.
All right, all approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Leads us to item number eight, which is adjourned at six thirty-five.
Thank you.